I wore this shirt this morning at six AM, getting up in the sun. I wore it tonight. Those moments I'm looking off, that's what I'm thinking about. It was skiing down silk. All right. Good evening, everybody. Six oh two, Wednesday, February second, twenty twenty-two. I want to call to order the Sunapee School District Meeting in the SMHS Gymnasium. Start with a roll call. Mr. Houston on the far side of the stadium, start the waves.
Walter Houston, Principal of Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Target Director of Student Services.
You have a messenger to go to.
Sean Moynihan.
You can read it.
Eddie Anderson, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Scott Rissman, School Board.
Jesse Tyler.
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
All right, if you stand and show some pride or allegiance, please.
I want to be vigilant, truly alive, and not a state for America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to jump right into four sets of meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty, public hearing.
I'll second.
All right. For discussion, any comments, corrections, additions? We're very lucky to have consistently good notes. All in favor of approving the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two public hearing, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Looking for a motion for the approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two bond hearing?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two bond hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. Same thing. Additions, comments, corrections? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two bond hearing as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous, thank you. Halfway. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two budget hearing?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two budget hearing.
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Seconded for discussion, comment, correction, anything on the notes? All in favor of approving the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two budget hearing minutes as noted, please say aye.
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 Round in the bend, looking for a motion to approve the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting notes?
I'll make a motion to approve the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting.
I'll second.
Any corrections, additions, commentary?
Couple things. One, in the public comment section, Marie Atwood, should we change to Mindy Atwood?
Oh, yep. I missed that.
And then Laurie Salvati, they were missing the last name. I don't know where she lives, but Laurie Salvati got up to speak.
Let me just note, hang on, let me catch up to you. Yep. Okay. Make those amendments?
Got it.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the amended minutes as noted for the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended school board meeting, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
As amended?
As amended.
Do I have a second on the amended?
I'll second.
Okay. Not to rediscuss, but giving you that option for formality. Going to move right to all in favor of approving the amended minutes as noted, please say aye.
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 Agenda review. I don't, I have something under school board topics, but sorry to be an agenda item. Do you have anything you want to add? Anybody else? Okay. We have public forum in accordance with policy D E D H. Being that there is some town select board news being discussed on social media and paper. Being that it is the last meeting of this board as elected, every year there's two open seats. I want to encourage community and stability that this is not a complaint session, nor a stop on a campaign trail. This is a school board meeting, which is a meeting in public, not with the public, and we need to get our work done. So if any campaigning or accusations or things beyond the scope of the school board ensue, I will politely wave my hand and say, out of order, and you relinquish your time to others. Now, in contrast, with a little more warmth and less of a dad voice, we really cherish the public comment time. So if you want to step to the mic by Mr. Houston, you'll have four minutes. If you get close on time, I'll respectfully do this, letting you know you've got less than half a minute, and ask that you follow the rules. The mic is open.
John Augustine, Stagecoach Road, quick comment on the agenda. So my copy's on two separate pages. Print on both sides of the paper, save costs and save treatise. Please consider printing two sides for future agendas. But my substantive comment is that I just want to give you an update on the births in Sunapee. You may recall, I do have statistics at different points through the course of last year. To refresh your memory, there were fifteen children born in Sunapee in full calendar year of twenty twenty-one. In January of this year, between January first and January thirty-first, there's one child born in Sunapee. Thank you.
Thank you for attending and speaking, John Augustine. Other voices that want to speak?
Jan Bessingport, Principal of White Road. I just wanted to comment on the January nineteenth elementary school info session. And at that session, I quoted from the New Hampshire Department of Education, our enrollment numbers. And I was disappointed that the superintendent and Jesse made the inference that those numbers were incorrect. These are the numbers that the superintendent gives to the Department of Education. And the cost per student in the Department of Education for elementary is twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. For the middle school, it is thirty-three thousand twenty-six per student per year. And the high school is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. The average statewide per student per year is eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four. So our high school is double that. I just find it very frustrating to want to put out just the facts and have decisions made by the facts. And then I think most taxpayers want to know that when you make decisions, you need to consider that information. I also quoted that in nineteen ninety-nine, K through twelve enrollment in Sunapee was five hundred and ninety-five students. And today, just without tuition students, because in nineteen ninety-nine, there weren't tuition students, sorry, I'm mistaken. Our total enrollment is three hundred and thirty-six kids. I think that's important while we're designing a school for a lot more than this. I don't like being perceived as someone who's just worried about taxes. I'm not. I'm a casa, I'm a grandmother, I'm a public school teacher. I am concerned about the quality of education, but also the sustainability. I appreciate when someone has proposed, and Article eight last year asked the school board to look into alternatives. And I think that these numbers were not considered. Thank you.
Thanks for attending and speaking, sharing your opinion. Go ahead.
Just real quick, I was speaking to the Principal of our strong line here from the Sunapee, two sixteen, right corner, wrote, disappointed by the nation in nineteen ninety-nine, his work to institute become the Sunapee. And actually, I'm sorry, I think the number was larger because the surrounding towns actually larger as well. So the number of tuition, particularly right in speech specifically, is two thousand four when I existed. And even before that, one of the numbers larger because the surrounding towns that could send a larger population, they would be back.
Thank you. Other attendees? All right. Oh, okay. Come on down.
Melissa, for our live on, live part of, I just want to thank, thank you to the whole board. I think you guys are going to be done a lot in the public and everything for decisions on masks and whatever, claiming to report for elementary school, anything like that, else like that, to the mask policy. I just want to say, thank you for having one in place. I have a daughter at grade school, she's too young to be vaccinated. Myself personally, I'm currently going through stage four cancer. So personally, I am in favor of having masks, just to protect not only my daughter, but myself. And I appreciate the school board taking into effect people like my daughter, her after the preschoolers, and giving her first work, you know, to even have the option to be vaccinated. And people like myself in there, I'm sure there are other kids' families who, you know, are a little compromised, having things like that going on. That, you know, we just don't go about. And who knows what could be brought home with, you know, COVID outbreak or cluster, or to have them stuff. I just want to say thank you for having a mask policy in place right now.
Thanks for being here and sharing your opinion. Not seeing any leaning motion. Anyone else who want to speak tonight? Okay. Thank you very much for all that are in attendance, whether you spoke or not. School updates, starting, Mr. Houston, for the elementary school, please.
One of my favorite parts of the month is when I get to brag about the school. So in January, it was very busy for us. We finished up our mid-year assessments, and now we're working on analyzing the data and looking at our instruction and changing our instructional practices based on that data. We had a professional development day after the long weekend in January, and we were able to spend the afternoon working on the curriculum. Our SEL, or our social emotional learning group, we've been focusing on a number of things, from providing small group instruction to students, to designing the beautiful landings that we work with students with, helping them to process problems and to identify their feelings and to work on how they can, if they're angry or upset, how they can move beyond that. The Friends of the Abbott sponsored a author last month, Jeff Pratt, who did a virtual visit with the children. Gave it to, worked on one book, and three to five worked on another book. End of the month with our spelling bee. And now we're going into February, and this week, we're supposed to start our winter activities program, which was a modified version of what we've done in the past due to a number of issues with our local venues. We were having to do an on-campus program. We're very excited about it, but due to the storm coming on Friday, we will not be able to do it. But next Friday, we can't wait, be able to go sledding and skating and do outdoor activities and spend an hour and a half outside. So we're looking forward to next Friday, not this Friday. We have Valentine's Day planned. I was telling the teachers, February is just as busy for an elementary school as December is. Between Ron Hog Day, Hundredth Day of School, President's Day, Valentine's Day, Jump Roll for Heart, and I think that's what happens in three weeks before February vacation. So we have a lot to do and get over. So we're very excited. We also had two members of staff begin, Kathy Butcher is our new school nurse, who is fantastic. We really enjoy having her on staff. And unfortunately, Dr. Donahue left two weeks ago. And miraculously, the day after she left, a music teacher in town, a piano teacher, said, I'd like to sub you for the next couple of weeks. So she is doing an awesome job. Her name is Julie Love. She is filling into her early and far least position, doing an phenomenal job. So that's what's happening at the elementary school.
Sure. Give an update, please.
Sure. So the majority of the student body is feeling decent, but a little tired after having midterms and the start of the third quarter. We're looking forward to the upcoming February break. It'll be a nice break to have and just get back into school and hanging out with friends. We are definitely looking forward to the upcoming winter carnival and the winter activities that our student council has planned for, sorry, before February break. So that is definitely something that most students are looking forward to. And prom committee has been meeting as well. We are looking for the future, we are planning for it, and we're hoping to have a lot of fun with that. And sports, we are wrapping up most of the seasons in the next few weeks, months to come. And you're also feeling a whole lot more comfortable as a student body now that COVID cases are calming down and feeling a lot more comfortable with all that. Thank you.
That's great. And just to say publicly, with respect, I know you want to homework, and you're at home yet. You want to go home and do your homework, go ahead, it's totally fine to step out.
You certainly do, you know, I was going to hang out, that's great.
Thanks for that. Mr. Moynihan.
Not nearly as exciting as the elementary school, but as Cam said, there were a lot of students going to the year for them. So that's a lot more up to be expected. Oh, we did have a middle, middle school stuff, we did with the management parent club. A lot of schools, maybe we gave that competition where parents could pick up. We actually have a murder, the murder mystery playing, which, in the auditions, in the process. Sorry, my voice is not working.
Very emotional about this tonight.
No, sorry. So it's about.
Okay. Lot going on, cruising towards break for old schools. Moving on, a superintendent update, please, Mr. Holden.
Thank you. Believe it or not, we're already looking at next year, and we're looking at professional development next year. I've put together a group of faculty to look at social emotional learning needs, not for our students, but how our faculty can better deal with potential kids in trauma, kids in crisis, kids that are coming to our classroom with more social emotional needs. And so I'm looking forward to meeting for the first time with that group next week, developing some goals, and then looking at what potential professional development opportunities we can bring in come next year to help better equip our teachers for what continues to walk through our door, day in and day out. I would, I just, again, let people, please be aware and follow if you have the time, legislation that's out there. There is a lot of stuff going through legislation that just is concerning. It doesn't seem like it's a, it's a New Hampshire sort of agenda. It looks to be much more of a national agenda. Couple of pieces I just point you to, there's a bill HB ten seventy-three, which is trying to take the right of a lawyer speaking in non-public to a school board and trying to make that now, that, that information would be admissible to the public through a right to know. So think about when you meet with your attorney, that's always been protected information. There's a, there's a stat, there's a piece of legislation trying to undo the ability to have that client privilege as a school board with your attorney in a non-public session. Other couple of pieces, sixteen seventy-nine, to completely dissolve all cooperative school districts. With the understanding now, folks here have talked about, hey, let's consolidate. Now it's dissolve cooperative school districts and let everyone kind of do it on their own. Potentially putting small districts in a place where they're going to have to pick up these bigger costs. There's a fourteen thirty-seven requiring all curriculum and materials to be posted on the school website by November first of each year. So in itself, we put a lot of our curriculum online, our teachers do a lot of the syllabus, but all content and curriculum and materials by November first. The way curriculum moves, the way things change in schools, that's almost an impossible request. And, you know, what happens if that can't happen? What happens if a book doesn't go up, that shouldn't have went up? Again, there is some, there's some merit in what people are trying to do here, but I don't think it's been thoughtfully thought, really thought through. And I'll just end with, well, two pieces, the educational freedom accounts. I have no issue with school choice. I think a lot of education, educators would say this is school choice. But if you've got to have school choice, whether it's freedom accounts or school choice, it's got to be fair and equal for everybody. If you're going to truly do it, it has to be fair and equal to everybody, not just the selected few. And right now, the lack of oversight that is in place with the educational freedom accounts, the impact that we're supposed to get so many people, so many kids doing it, we had so much more, the bill's up to almost three million dollars. It's sifting money out of public schools, where again, ninety percent of the kids in the school go, and it's sifting money out. When my son was at District Brady, I would certainly, being eligible now, the requirement is being dropped of poverty. Hey, I could put in, get my thirty-nine, four thousand dollars and offset my tuition for my son sending him to District Brady. Because now that's an educational freedom account. Again, I have no issue, and I don't think many educators have issues, or boards would have issues, with school choice. You know, where it works, some would feel school choice could be positive and beneficial to us. But if we're going to do it, let's make it fair, let's make it sure that there's some accountability systems that are overseeing it. And let's make sure the equability through all kids in our state, not just some in few. I guess I'd leave you with that.
Yeah, just think about special needs and folks without transportation and things. Yeah, for anybody who wants to really be tuned into public education, it's, it's a lot to keep up with from the State House, very active time. But you can get some pulses, get some read, and understand what's coming, what may or may not seem viable, how we go forward. That by itself is a time commitment, and if you want to be really engaged in public schools and understanding, that's the best way to.
One more, one more, Chair, quick question, a quick point. Just for a point of clarification, and I think this was the, the community board. We report enrollment on October first of every year. We report enrollment, that's all the kids in our schools, that's enrollment. The state then teases that out to average daily membership. And I think I, we've given a presentation, we'll probably, we probably in March, if we get a new board, might be not a bad day to go back and visit. But average daily membership does take out tuition kids, does take out preschool, only counts out kindergarten, instead of full-time, it's half-time students. So enrollment is a term, average daily membership is a term. So let's not mix the two, average daily membership, it's whole out of enroll. And enrollment is what we report on October one. And our enrollment this year reported the DOE was four hundred and one students.
Right, which aligns with the NASDAQ prediction. But yes, good point, separate average daily membership and enrollment, and make sure people understand the difference of those terms. Good, good ad. School board topics, a couple of quick ones, if you don't mind, I'll go first. Mr. Holden, Josh Chow, the Select Board Chair, Shannon, the new town manager, and I met again, trying to have both sides of our tax bill, have more open communication, more connection going into deliberative next week. Had a great meeting for an hour, just talking about where, where are there potential ways, despite being separate entities, that we could look at any kind of complimentary services or cost savings? And so it's not, there's no like sudden crystal ball to do that. There are no sudden magical cost-free solutions to anything when it comes to the town or the school, but we did have a really good conversation about it, and I just want to make sure the board knows that, you know, I proposed this last year, or a year, a little over a year ago, town manager, select board chair were open to it, and so that dialogue is going. I found the meeting so far to be incredibly helpful and insightful. So with that, we, recurring topic in the meeting was, are both the school and the town are trying to address and move forward from some elements being run on the skinny for a long time? And so the town can speak for itself with what they're going through to correct course and move forward. But you look at what their situation is with running skinny, and I look at our thirty-six year conversation about having safe education space for students, there's some interesting parallels in our community and hope that March eighth is an opportunity for the community to come together in the best interest of the town, best interest of the schools and K-12, and safe ventilated learning space. It was just sort of a broader conversation, poking at two different things where there could be some potential. I've been getting, I just wanted to comment on the masks feedback. Some people have been very thankful, but what I really appreciate, and I said at the last meeting, the one before, I'll say again, I really appreciate the stability of people with vastly different opinions. I think we're one of the few communities that succeeded in everybody being able to be right for how they feel about things, but not making personal attacks, not disrupting meetings, not, nothing going too far out of line. So great respect and appreciation for the community for whatever you feel about them. I think it's something that Sunapee should be proud of as a community, that you can have a vastly different opinion, and it doesn't have to become us versus them. So just really appreciative of that, especially trying to run meetings. I think that's it. Things you're hearing, communication, concerns, chatter at the gas pump?
Well, I just want to bring up the point of births in town. So, you know, we've heard that a few times from Mr. Augustine. So I went down to the town, and I looked up the records just to see if there was any correlation. And in two thousand and eleven, we had eight births in town. And then it ranges from twelve the next year, nineteen, seventeen, sixteen, all the fourteen and sixteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Two thousand seventeen was a big year, twenty-two births. But the average was eighteen. So we were only three under the average. And it seems like the bell curve has gone up and not down. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that doesn't have a correlation to what our enrollment is at school. Because if you look back and move ahead six years from two thousand and eleven, we definitely had more kids than eight in our first grade.
Good, thanks. Anything?
You don't have to have anything, I just want to give you the board.
No, I guess along the lines of enrollment, I don't know if you have these numbers, Russ, but we talked about preschool this year being a waitlist for the preschool. Do you have like a estimate of what that waitlist was? Because we have twenty-five enrolled, if I'm not mistaken. We're, right now, we do not have a waitlist.
Right now?
We have been able to bring in some of the kids that had been on the waitlist. So right now, I think, this, this is a little bit deceiving, I'll say that upfront. We have twelve every morning, and then I think we're going to have eight in the afternoon. But twelve doesn't mean twelve students because three-year-olds only come twice a week. So it's a two, two-day or three-day or five-day a week program, depending on. So it's, it's somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five students right now. I don't actually have the numbers with me, I apologize.
Russ, I know that some people keep talking about this magical bubble of five hundred-plus students, but am I correct in what I've heard, that all towns had a bubble of five, six hundred students? And that we've all equally gone up with students and gone down with students from other people I've spoken to? Is that accurate?
It sure is.
Thank you.
The state, there was actually five hundred, and I just looked it up because we have a, again, I don't know what the information's online, but I believe there was five hundred and ninety-nine students or ninety-five students in that year. And Sean can tell you, probably around two thousand and six, we started to see the drop, as the state started to see the drop in the housing market, and things kind of run astray, and it's continued to drop from there. But you look at, and that has happened across the state, right? There are very few towns right now, even some of the border towns to Massachusetts remain, are still struggling with, with some of the numbers.
So if we go back to when I was in high school again, it seems like we were always, you know, in the four hundred range. We have the bubble, like everybody else has hit, and we've come back down to the four hundred range. So over the last thirty-plus years, we continue to just stay average every year.
Again, so I'm, right now, on our website, I'm looking at K-12 data, front desk, K-12, not pre-K-12. From two thousand and eight to two thousand, projected two thousand and twenty-eight, and the highest of two thousand and eight, again, was a little over four fifty, and they're projecting that to stay in twenty twenty-eight at four hundred. And that line is pretty straight across with bumps up or down. So the answer to your question is yes. We continue to be consistent, steady at around four hundred. That's what I thought, thank you.
I just want to make a comment just to piggyback on some of the enrollment comments. I think that the Budget Committee, and this year in particular with two new members, we really dug into enrollment and considered that, talked about that quite a bit, which was a great refresher for all of us. And to speak to Russ's comment, you know, it's very clear that the numbers that the New Hampshire Department of Education put out do not represent the number of students we have in our building every day. And when we look at the costs and what resources we have to put into educating those kids, those numbers understate the need. And so I guess it's just my hopes. And, um, so I guess it's just my hopes in this, you know, election campaign, when we talk about enrollment numbers, we're not going to go to a source that doesn't accurately represent what our needs are, and that we can be more full, you know, more forthright and not, not misre, misrepresent that.
Can there's a, a quick second? Okay? On that, because I think it's a, it's a, it's a great point, so, um, right now, we have twenty-five kids in preschool, we have twenty in kindergarten, we have thirty in first grade, and those are our numbers as of October one, twenty twenty-one. We, those kids are in our, in that school for the next seven, six, five years. We have that responsibility to those kids to do something about that building. If that was ten, 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 and ten, that's still our responsibility. And, and I think we're getting caught on this, we have kids in that building, that building isn't where it should be, we know that, we've addressed it, we've had professionals, architects, engineers come in and say, state fire marshals, fire marshals, this is wrong, you need to do something about it. So, we can get hung up on twenty kids, twenty-five kids, the kids are there, and it's our responsibility to take care of those kids.
Yeah, it's, that was going to be, I had a similar comment, it's, you know, you have, I've been talking about this for thirty-five years, and we're, in the last, last year, when we had the awful report from the state of New Hampshire, or the third worst in the state for life safety. Like, we've talked about this for more than a third of a century as a community. I'm really hoping that we can bring this back to, in a community that has a school, that's a, that's met the NASDAQ projection of total enrollment, not average daily membership, total enrollment, it's been spot-on, we're tugging along, this is a remarkable time in history, to come together and provide that space and invest and make up for the last two renovations that the town chose not to do. This is an enormous opportunity, and I hope that everyone will focus on, away from the noise, that those trailers are going to have children in them tomorrow. The school is one of the last used ones in the state that has never had and does not have mechanical ventilation, issues with fire safety, plugs coming out of the wall. It's known, it's been talked about for a long time, there's a thoughtful plan, let's get together and provide safe space for our students.
If anybody's interested, they should really read the Brown Report from nineteen ninety-six. You know, twenty-six years ago, all these items were the same items and more now, obviously, because we haven't done anything with the Brown Report. Professional company went through and evaluated the school in nineteen ninety-six. If you have any doubts, read the nineteen ninety-six report, and then add twenty-six years of doing nothing to a building.
There was a running star before that report. So, get your facts, um, flyer season has started, get your facts, uh, betterSCS.org, and it'd be really exciting for the community, if we can come together on this. Uh, I want to move on to action items, uh, looking for a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar.
I'll second it.
For those planning summer vacations, a teammate was trying to book something in May or June in Acadia, and it was already filling up, so if everybody's planning ahead, the first day of school is now going to be, uh, August twenty-ninth, if that helps your planning. All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, approve the spring extracurricular coaches.
Point of clarity, uh, Mr. Frederick, and I just, we're not just starting for the first time, I, I will not be coaching middle school baseball.
I, I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you, I, I'm not sure you would want me coaching middle school baseball, track team, yes, middle school baseball, not so much, but thank you, Mr. Frederick, for adding me to the list.
When you're, when you're, when you're doing it, it'll make you feel ten years younger.
Make you feel older, yeah.
The next day, you'll feel ten years older.
Good for him. Well played.
I did miss the whole, uh, mistakenly, uh, got signed up for.
Wow, I was just like, wow, why, why am I on the list? But, okay.
When I was on school board in Vermont, uh, the athletic director put my name on like that and sent it to all the parents before I checked you, and then I had to do it. Sounds like the worst baseball coach ever, to serve. Um, all right, can I get a, let's just do this properly, can I get a motion to approve the amended spring coaches that are, not going to include our superintendent, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended list of spring coaches.
I'll second it.
All right, any ribbing, that's our discussion time, I want to say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good one, Fred, if you're listening at home.
Good one.
Funny. Um, all right, want to get to the manifests, looking for a motion to approve man, AP manifest and then payroll manifest, do them separate. Ed, you've been our star with this, do you want to shine on our last meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve the AP manifest, twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, forty thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents, and twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and ten cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving manifest as noted, duly by Ed, please say aye.
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 And second round, looking back at Ed, no pressure.
Make the motion to approve payroll manifest, twenty twenty-two dash fourteen point one, one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents, twenty twenty-two dash fourteen point one, two thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, and twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second again.
Discussion? As quiet as our last action as a team. It's amazing. The whole year's going to be done, and next sentence, all in favor of approving the payroll manifest, gracefully noted by Ed, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor, thanks. So, agenda for next meeting, just to make sure everybody understands the cycle, how this works, I will not be long. Um, that concludes this board's meeting schedule, we have deliberative on, uh, Monday.
Seventh, the seventh at six.
Seventh at six, sorry. Six, six P M. here is deliberative, and then the town is on Tuesday, and then we look towards the vote, and after the March eighth election day, hopefully Sonopie sets a new record for active engagement, then the new board, whoever is elected for the two spots, comes in. Ed, Scott, and I are in the middle of our three-year terms, and so we'll see if the board stays the same or changes, and then we figure out who does the committees, the chair, and the whole bit, and then we're off to the races for another year. Hopefully renovating a new school. Thank you very much to all of you for your service. Thank you for the civil act of public engagement. I'd like to make a motion to close the Sonopie School Board District Meeting Wednesday, February twenty-second, at six thirty-nine P M.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, all in favor? Good night, Sonopie, thank you for a good year.